All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the February 27 meeting of the Granby Planings zoning commission to order. If we could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do a commission check in now. My name's Mark Loppen. I'm the commission chair. I'll start from my right.
Eric Lukingbeal, member.
Paula Johnson, alternate.
Eric Myers, vice chair.
Bob Lavitt, member. Steve Muller, member.
Brendan Shea, member.
So commission today and Paula Johnson will be sitting in. Okay, next on our item is number four, public session for items not on the agenda or subject to a public hearing. I will state this evening, we do have an item later on our agenda, but there will not be any discussion this evening on the pending application for 37 Hartford Avenue. I understand that some people may have questions and we will clarify some questions when we get to that part of the agenda in this evening. But would anyone else like to speak to us about an item not on the agenda or subject to a public hearing? Please come forward. Anyone on Zoom?
Give them a second. They might not be able to hear you.
Okay. Give them a second. Come forward. It's just if you introduce yourself and address, please.
I'm Harry Warner of the Mongonard Road with Granby. Just a general question. Years ago on the conservation commission, we mapped the aquifer as exists in Granby. My question is, in a general sense, when any proposal comes before you, is there always a consideration of any possible impact on the aquifer?
Procedureless, there is an aquifer protection overlay. There's an aquifer protection zone that's mapped out in the town and that's considered in our regulations. So yes.
And where is that located? Where a citizen can go in and see that?
So Abby, want to explain the zoning maps?
Yeah, it is on the town website, through the community development department webpage. Yeah, you can give me a call. I can walk you through how to access that through the website.
Okay. And because I'm an old fossil and I can't hear anything, would you tell me your name?
Yes, here, I'll write it down for you.
Good to see you, Harry.
Well, you're not that old. You're casting spirit on us.
Thank you.
Thank you. What else? It's easy. So it's nothing else. We'll close public session. Next on our agenda is item number five, action on the minutes from January the 9th. Seems a long time ago, but that's when our blast meeting was sold. I took a look. I didn't see anything, but I'll open it for commission discussion.
They will put to me too.
Stay here. If not, if there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
The motion is second to approve the minutes. All in favor? Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
We have one abstention and the minutes carry. Next on our agenda, we have two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is for application for a special permit for ground mounted solar. Vice Chair Myers could read the call to the hearing, please.
Yes, sir. There will be a public hearing conducted by the P and Z on Tuesday, February 27, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road to hear and consider the following item. Application seeking a special permit under zoning regulations, section 8.2, 9.1.3 for a residential ground mounted solar energy system for property located at 200 Simsbury Road, R2A Zone File Z-25-23. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file in the community development office.
Is the applicant or the representative here? Oh, on Zoom.
Courtney Roberts from Empire Solar Solutions.
Did they make it bigger?
Oh, yeah.
You can speaker.
Okay. Great. Good evening. Want to explain a little bit about your application? Give some walk for it.
Sure. So it's actually going to be hybrid. Part of it is going to be going on the garage. The rest of it is going to be going to the left of the garage and the rear of the yard. I lost my screen. Hopefully you can still see me.
You can see him. We can see him.
So it's about 436 square feet based on photos of the property. We don't believe that any of the neighbors can currently see it. It is 100 feet from wetlands that are on the property, which we did get approval from that committee already.
May I answer the question?
Oh, sit down. Go ahead.
As I remember, we used to know the owners of the house before. There are two houses on this driveway, correct?
Correct.
Yes. And so you were the back house. You can't see it on the map we have. We can only see the garage. So your house is to the right side.
Your house, if you're looking from an aerial view, the house is south of the garage.
Okay, south, yes.
Yeah. And then there's another house that is west of that house, in between some trees.
Yep. We can see that. What we can't see was... Have you talked to your neighbors about how they feel about this? You had a chance to do that since you're so close?
I don't know if the homeowner has spoken to neighbors. I hope that if they do have concerns that they're attending a public hearing, that we can address them. But I don't know if the homeowner has personally spoken with the neighbor.
So we did email out, or I'm sorry, mail out notification to the abutters. We did have a couple of phone calls from residents coming. I'm not sure if it was one of the direct abutters, but once they saw where it was proposed, there were no concerns.
Just, you know, you have in the packet, just for the record, did you state a little bit about the panels with the anti-glare coating? What is the type of panels you're putting in?
Correct. They have anti-glare coating.
Just want to give a little discreet, just for the record, just if you could go, just describe a little bit about their setup and about a solar panel.
And when you say set up.
You have a narrative here. Just walk us through your narrative, please.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Can you walk us through? You have a narrative you put in the packet?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just walk us through that, please.
My apologies. All right. So it's a proposed hybrid ground mounted roof mounted solar array for residential property at 200 Simsbury Road. The ground mount will be 436 square feet in the rear, no visual from neighbors. There will be a trench that runs through from their meter going around the driveway to connect to the ground mount. The panels are anti-glare coating, lap frame. They'll all be installed in symmetrical and uniform arrays. They are anti-wet. Apparently there are panels that have wet, and ours do not.
Thank you. Do your staff have questions? I do not.
Questions for Abby. There really isn't anything that violates the ordinance, other than the fact that they do need our special approval to back this.
Correct. Yeah. And there were just two items I just wanted clarification on. One, per the regulation, any unused system has to be removed within 12 months of cessation of operations. I just wanted to make sure that you and the homeowner were aware of that. And the regulation also does require that the system is primarily designed to produce energy for consumption within the house or the structures on that property. It seems like it's sized for that purpose, but I just wanted confirmation of that.
Yes, but we can confirm that their utility company would never... So towns won't allow us to cross parcels and the utility company won't allow us to go over a certain percentage of their utility usage. So it is strictly for this property and will only use.
That's good. Well, there's no other questions from the commission. I'll...
I have one question.
Please.
For the ground mounted solar array, are you going to be clearing any of the forests that would create more visibility from your neighbor?
There's only, it's one tree, but let me scroll down through the plans. There's a tree removal proposed. So two trees are going to be removed from the west side of it. And I don't know if you're looking at an aerial view or not, but there's still about 500 or so more trees after that. These ones are just very close to the garage.
Thank you.
The public, if you should speak on this application, please come forward. Anyone on Zoom? Does anyone on Zoom that like to speak, raise your hand or shout out? See anybody on Zoom in the room? Officials have any other questions or staff? Any other questions about this?
No, I just want to note that it did receive wetlands approval.
We did receive wetlands approval.
Yes. Is there anything else from the applicant?
I don't think so.
Without objection, then we will close the public hearing. The commission has 65 days to make its decision, but we'll be discussing it later on this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is another public hearing for an application seeking a site plan modification in storage structures for commercial property on Salmon Brook Street. Vice Chair Myers, could you please read the call to the hearing?
There will be a public hearing conducted by the P and Z on Tuesday, February 27, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road to hear and consider the following item. Application seeking a site plan modification and special permit under zoning regulations, section 3.5.4.3 for three storage structures, outdoor commercial activity display and other site improvements for a property located at 563 Salmon Brook Street, C2 Zone File Z-1-24. At the hearing, interested parties may appear and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposal are on file in the community development office.
Is the applicant or representative here? Introduce yourself and give us your address, please.
Sure. My name's John Khan. Property is 563 Salmon Brook Street, where the red building at the antique shop, up on Bruton.
Any point to explain to us what you're asking for a special permit? And we have the narrative about this.
Can we go to slide 20? Or no, is it just paper copies?
Catherine, are you able to put it up? Thank you.
That'd be the easiest. Slide 20. So just a brief introduction. New England pine actually has two parts of the business. One is we provide professional forestry products to farmers.
You just directed, you're up here for us today.
So two parts of the business. One is professional forestry products. So we provide milling equipment, firewood equipment, and milling chains and chainsaws to arborists and professional forestry providers throughout the U.S. The other part of the business is actually wood products. So we develop a lot of tabletops, countertops, shelving. We sell wood for woodworkers, turners, carvers, et cetera. So this is inside our base downstairs of the building. And these are some examples of things that we create. Next slide. So part of this is, well, we're asking for a special permit to store some of our wood slabs as part of our process. So part of the process is the wood dries for a few weeks outside and then we bring it inside for our finished product. We'll talk about where that location is. There's two site improvements that I'd like to propose. One, replace the rotting fence that's actually fallen down and missing. We've already procured the panels. It's a standard six foot high wood picket fence. It's pretty long. So we procure the panels. We just have to put them up and repair it. Another is a potential privacy fence here in the front of the store. If it's a requirement to kind of help, you know, separate the front parking area from the rear, we can do it. If it's not a requirement, it's an added expense, but it is an option that we put on the map. Next slide. So here's the kind of the bulk of the discussion. We want to put two small carports in the rear for storing our equipment, you know, our skid steer, like some of our attachments. And then we have a larger carport we'd like to put in the open area in the back where we would end up putting our wood inside instead of keeping it outside on display. We, you know, 25 person company, it's not, we're not very big, so we move it around as needed and we use it as flex space. So we need, I guess we need a special permit to utilize our rich space, which is why we're here today. The rear of the property is 12 feet below grade. So when you're like on the road, you can't see down like where the wood store. And here are the green areas indicate the flex space that we're discussing. And the carport, you know, we haven't purchased that, but that's something that I see that's, you know, going forward is to get some of our stuff inside, maybe late this year, early next year, depending on what it costs and, you know, how you can do it. And that would be temporary. It's not like a fixed building. It's a web picture of it. It's more like a, it's a carport. I'll show you that. Next slide. We also, so we also want a special permit to display like our logs, things where we bring in log splitters and equipment that we have here on the display at the front of the store. And so we're also asking for a special permit to be able to display some of our products that are seasonally here as needed. And next slide. So this is the small carport, 13 feet by 12 feet, that we would put in the back. And then the larger style, it's either white or green. I haven't purchased it yet, but it would be an 80 by 40, which would allow us to keep a lot of that stuff inside in half of the weather, which would really be advantageous long term. So that's summary. That's a summary of this special permit.
Abby, four questions. You want to go through some of the staff history? Because you're storing stuff today, correct?
Yep.
That's... Is there a permit for that or is that non-conformity?
Right. So there's no current special permit for outdoor storage at this location. This was actually brought to staff's attention. Someone called in asking what was going on up there. So the zoning enforcement officer and I met with the applicant, reviewed the area and explained to him that the outdoor operations do require special permit approval through the commission. And that's why he came and submitted the application and we're here tonight.
Is there any further questions or any other concerns inside your memo? Anything you want to highlight?
Just a couple of items. I did meet the applicant on site last week and there was some discussion about some additional screening between his property and the residential homes to the rear. So thinking about that, just noting that any materials, they're not shown to be stored in parking spaces. And should the commission approve the application, that would have to be followed.
Yeah. And so like depending on, oh, with pleasure, but depending on where, you know, we, so that fence line is the rear two homes behind the shop. And then there's one home on the right that there is no fence line. So that may be an opportunity for like a burn. We could burn, put hedges up or something like that. And so it's kind of up to what, you know, makes sense. So if, you know, that's six foot high fence paneling, it could be seven feet. So we can also lift it up, you know, a little bit and then burn the bottom. There's a lot of things that we can do that would help, you know, kind of segregate those two areas depending on the feedback. That's usually not a problem. That's easily, we need to know kind of what we want to do for that segregation.
Yeah, we just on the parking, I'm familiar with the location and it shows parking spaces in the back of this plan. Other parkings, the antique store and when it was the tire store parked in the front.
Yes. Yep.
That was actually never paved. So that map's actually not right.
Well, that's out of where I'm going.
Yes. Yeah. So there's, yeah. What is out there does not comply with what was approved in terms of the total paved area and the parking spaces. However, the outdoor storage areas that he's showing per this application would comply should that area be paved and parking spaces needed, if that makes sense. But yeah, right now, from what I understand, parking is not an issue on the site with the antique in.
Correct. Yeah, parking, plenty of spots. Yep. So like people parking front on our side and the side of the building as well. So plenty of parking.
Could meet the regulations for parking.
That'd be good if you want enough space.
I'll open it up. I have some more questions, but I'll start, maybe I'll start, I'll go down here, Brennan, this time. Are there any other questions?
The display areas that are off from, penitent 02, you know, I see in the photo, you have stacks of lumber roadside. Is that one of the black trailers? Is that one of the display areas that you're considering to?
We clean that up. So yeah, once we got, once that was gone, they just told us that we can't display the roadside. That's it gone. So actually, put the power supply back up. But we don't plan on having a display on the roadside because I was told that that's not allowed, right? So the display is off the parking area. Right. So that, so that, right. So that little green area there was where that stack was.
Yeah.
And then we removed that. That's not there.
But you're asking for that display area?
Correct. Yep. The one above is not on the parking lot where the roadside, that's way set back, like 50, 60 feet from the roadside. But it's nice, that display right there is nice because as customers come by, you can see, you know, our wood splitters and our wood.
So just, I see three green rectangles. The one that's on the lowest part of that map up there, you would like that to be approved as a display area.
No, that's, parking area. Yeah. We fixed that. It's, the map's not updated.
Oh.
Yeah. Because that is like parking area right there between the two sides. So we said, okay, we'll take that out and we'll do those top two, which are not parking areas and are set back out of the way.
Got it. Thank you.
So like I understand the ability to have, you know, clear spots. That makes sense.
And then the trailers that you have, are those for sale trailers?
They're mine.
Those are yours?
They're registered. Yeah. The ones that are parked like here, these are, these are ones that are mine. They're registered later.
Okay.
With the proposal for the carports, it looks kind of tight back there by the drawings on there. You're going to have enough room to?
Yeah, these are small. That's, that's this one, which, so if you go to the map, the 80 by 40 actually fits really well. Next zone with plenty of keep out on the right side, you know, so you can go around it. It's not like that to the border. That's not really the scale.
That's good. Because it looks like to be on top of each other.
Yeah, it's not, it's not to scale. There's a lot of room back there. There's a lot of room back there. So the two, the two 12 by 13s would be for storing like a skid steer and stuff out of the way. That 80 by 40 would be like the main kind of storage area for the wood. Get it out of the rain and stack it in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess we could try to do a scale drawing.
Oh, so it's the two red that you're looking for carports? The 60 by 80 would be open spacing?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So the green, yeah, all that green is just indicating like possible place where I would put a sack of wood while moving stuff around. And it's not like, I can't tell you that like I'm going to use this one corner every day. It's not really how it works. Put a stack there and then next week we'll grab and bring it inside. And so it's kind of like a flex space. You know, it's not like a procedure thing where this, you know, A goes to D, B goes to C. It's not like, that's a custom thing. So we really don't know where we're going to put a sack today and we'll move it tomorrow. But that, yeah, that indicates like areas where we can move stuff. Yeah. And we're still, you know, we're still cleaning up the back there. There's a lot of dead trees that are actually pretty dangerous. And so I have a climber that, you know, they're coming to remove the dangerous trees that are dead. And so it's a cleanup zone right now. We're still getting to it. We'll be, hopefully by summer it'll all be cleaned up. There's a lot of logs and stuff we've got to move. So it's a work in progress, but we're just 1.5 people. So let's do as much as we can.
Is your store in the old tire shop?
Yes. Yeah. The upstairs, the upstairs is the store and downstairs is like the wood store, isn't wood working shop.
Okay.
And the antique store is the whole right side.
Yeah.
All right. So I've got a few questions.
Sure.
What has been done on the property since you received notice from the building department?
Yep.
Hold on, let me finish. The building department, what's been done on the property since you received notice after the notice that you were in non-conformance? I visited the location a couple of times during that process and more currently, and it seems like more stuff has come in versus ceasing and desisting, so to speak.
Ceasing and desisting.
Well, I think you received a notice that you're...
So we didn't issue a cease and desist. We notified that the site was not in compliance and you needed to apply for the special permit.
Thank you for that clarification. Wood chips. It seems like a ton of wood chips are being brought in from off-site, not necessarily being generated on-site from cutting your site. And why is that?
So we brought the wood chip set to keep the dirt down, like on the back area. It's a mud pit. So when I first bought the property, parking lot would go three feet underwater. So the drainage has been fixed and we put the wood chips out to get rid of all the dirt. And we don't want wood chips are being brought in now because they're all spread. But that's something that we could use to firm up the rear and then help with the privacy.
So it's, is it not your intention to continue to bring wood chips sell on?
No, we don't, no, we don't sell wood chips. We don't sell firewood.
Okay.
And that was, we brought, that was brought in from the land clearing company because we could use it for the mud. They said you could use the chips. But yep, we could use it to keep this place dry and not in a mud pit because it turns into a mud pit and harpy. So the drainage issues were pretty bad, you know, because it was all burnt up. There's concrete, tires in the dirt. This was, yeah, going back almost two years when I cleaned up the back, you know. So we threw all the concrete away. We threw all the tires away. Drainage is good, you know, the ground drains now well. So we took the mud chips and they're spreading it. And we're still working on spreading. That's not done. This, you know, still needs to be leveled out and graded and made look great and stuff.
This may be, I'll open it up to either one of you. It's my understanding that fire department has had to be called onto the property to deal with certain issues? Can you explain if that was all?
Yeah, I heard. When the wood chips are brought in, they're piled up. I heard my, Jason, my buddy who works there, told me that they visited for the pile and we knocked that pile down 20 minutes after they came.
So the condition that existed with?
Oh, yeah. Immediately. Yeah. I came, so they came like 9:30. There's a pile of wood chips, like maybe 10, 12 feet high, like it was a big pile. And then as soon as I came there, they said, oh, they were here checking because that's hot. We knocked it all down and spread it all. So now it's, it's not like perfect, you know, the ground's not perfect. We're going to get to that, but it's all spread down to a three foot layer. Yeah, there's no fire hazard. We had to take care of that right away. Yeah. And then that, you know, the whole process, we put, keep smoke sensors in the building. We have a new fire system in the building and all that's been approved. We just actually had the fire inspector there like two weeks ago to look at everything. So, yeah, we've done a lot of upgrades on that. We take it seriously.
I can't comment to what happened on the outside, but in terms of the inside, the fire marshal has been working closely with the property owner and he does his regular inspection to make sure that everything, everything should be there, so no issues.
Yeah, dust, you know, dust collection systems and everything have to be done right. So, you know, it's a wood shop. So it's got to be proper.
So the other question, because the drawings that propose those carports are not to scale, question for you, Abby, about the applicability of the various... not to scale, um, question for you, Abby, about the applicability of the various, various zoning laws we have with regard to setback, sides, rears, those count as a structure as it would any shed or other structure?
Correct.
And have you seen a measured drawing of where they would be? It looks too tight to be.
Right, so we need to use the full size site plan, uh, to draw those to scale. So we could verify, I'm not concerned about, uh, the smaller ones, but certainly that the larger one, the eighty by forty, that might be getting close to the required side yard.
So I guess it might, is less of a question, maybe an observation. I noticed what you've proposed there are those, um, tarp hoop houses. Uh, any consideration to do something a little bit more nicer?
Yes, yes. Like I'd love to have like a Morton building with that eighty by forty. Um, and that's something that I could look into later in the year. You know, we had one come out to give us a, like a high level quote. And I would, once I kind of know the size, so I didn't really know the size, right? So we like estimated, I don't remember if to look, maybe it was like sixty by thirty or so. So once we kind of get a size, I would go out and recall. I'd love to put like a Morton building or a nice steel building there. That would be fantastic. I just have to get a quote and see what's gonna cost. I know concrete's expensive. So we just have to, you know, figure that out. But yeah, I would love to look at that. I'd be open to that a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Abby, I would have to just offer that before I could approve an application, I'd have to see a more developed site plan with measurements and setbacks.
That's what I was asking too, when I said, it looks kind of tight back.
Abby, another question possibly for you or whatnot. All the equipment that's on the property, the loaders, the machines or whatnot, how does our, uh, current regs deal with that?
Um, so typically it's treated as accessory to the operation. So this, this is in terms of equipment that's being used by the operation.
As opposed to being sold, that's right.
Correct, not the excess, right.
That's what I'm referring to.
Right.
So all of that heavy equipment that's scattered across property would technically be not part of our special permit process?
Well, that's something the commission can address. Um, I'm trying to think, there haven't been any comparable operations, but I know with some of our restaurants, if they have other vehicles, typically they're in parking areas, um, which kind of goes without saying, but the, the commission could look at that, um, if there's set areas, uh, where it's appropriate to park that.
All right, I'll concede the floor for a little while. Paul?
Uh, you stole most of my Congress. Um, I'm, I'm finding this a little too loose. Uh, not enough definition, not enough, it's gonna be this way, it's gonna be this way, it's gonna be this way. And when I drove through today, I counted, I don't know, twelve or at least twelve. I, I didn't get out of my car, to be very honest, but I, but I could see various pieces of equipment. And then on the south side, there was a huge truck. So there couldn't have been parking on that side even if you wanted. So I, I, I have a feeling that what I would like to see is I'd like to see a defined plan so we know exactly where everything is going to be. And I also am not comfortable with hoop houses. Um, I understand a cost issue and I, I feel for you for that. But I kind of think when you're gonna have a business and if you're really gonna do a business, let's, let's make it, uh, something that you know is going to last. It's not just for six months, a year until, uh, that's just my, um. As far as display, I don't know how much display that you can do. We've run across something in North Cranby where we're gonna have a little display and we had all sorts of problems and it's covered. It's, it's okay, but it isn't okay. So I think we have to be careful of that. I think your business is wonderful. I think it's a wonderful addition to the town. So this is certainly not a criticism of what you're trying to do. But if you can be more specific, I want to see where the parking is. I want to see where that berm is gonna be. I want, I don't want to see your equipment down in the back. So the kind of fencing you're gonna have, and that would be from the, the building over and probably, I don't know, east, east, west also, if it's, can be seen that way and the people behind. So if you can give them the protection so that you have your business, you can do what you want to do and do it so it works for the neighborhood and, and is, is, uh, a success all, you know, go for it. But I, I need, need to, and I think most of the commissioners want the details, not just, this is what I'm thinking, this is where it might be, this is almost where it's gonna be. So, good luck. You know, I think it's a wonderful business. I think I love your product. Pierre?
Uh, yeah, I have a few questions. Tell me a little bit more about New England Pine Timber Company. How long has it been around?
Uh, been a business seven years.
And is this your only place of business?
Yeah.
And how did you happen to choose this as a location for your business?
Yeah, good question. So, uh, I'm an engineer. Actually, I have my PhD in semiconductors and, uh, working in, uh, semiconductors and, and nanotechnology for almost twenty years. Started doing the pine seven years ago as a passion project, actually. Wasn't supposed to be a business. I started milling with the equipment available on, on, you know, commercially available and the equipment was terrible. So I developed my own chainsaw mill, product line, and that started selling. And by five years into the business, figured out where I can do it full-time. So now I consult inside for some very large industrial guidance companies in engineering and I do New England pine full-time. As part of that grow up, you know, the milling equipment is starting to be there, then it turned into arborist equipment. Because you have to have a good portfolio to stay in business, otherwise you're not gonna be in business. You have to have a good portfolio. And then of course, part of that is the passion for wood. So, so when you start milling, you really love what, you know, building things and love seeing different species of wood and that's kind of how it took off. So those are the two halves of the, of the business. We're looking for a, a commercial location and I live in Winter. I'm from, I used to work in East Cranby for a company called Newford. I know the area well. And, uh, it came on the market and I, I purchased it because it's a small shop. It's like sixteen hundred square feet or so, my, my shop area. It's not big at all. The antique store's thirty one hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Um, and I said, you know, it's big enough for a, a small little shop and then downstairs two bays are perfect for a wood shop. It's a one point five person type business. It's not, you know, Home Depot. Um, we're very, very custom products. And so that's, you know, it came up for sale. It was affordable. Can't buy a two million dollar building. And, uh, and of course it's a, you know, nice access to Connecticut and, and west, in Massachusetts. So it ended up just being a, a great, you know, location.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I think I heard mentioned that there was gonna be a, a picket fence. Is that for, for privacy of the, of the neighbors?
Yeah, there's one there now. It's broken and decrepit. It's probably been like that for twenty years.
About years ago.
I may be, uh, not knowledgeable about what a, a picket fence is, but I always thought a picket fence had spaces in between a picket. So, I mean.
This is not that. This is a, a, a continuous, like, yes, stock, stock case.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
I use a long-term.
Okay, no, I got it. Have you talked to you, these neighbors about how they feel about all the proposed picket fence?
Um, I have not. There's an existing fence, so I thought fixing it would be.
That'd be good enough?
Well, I mean, what, I mean, good enough? I mean, I thought.
Well, I'm, I mean, I'm just curious if, if you've talked to your neighbors about your plans?
I have not.
No, okay, all right. I, I guess, you know, as a general matter, we encourage applicants to talk to the neighbors about how they might feel about.
Okay.
What's going on. Um, okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
I just have a couple of, uh, gonna echo several comments. First, I do wanna say, from my standpoint, glad to have this, you know, your business. It's, it's nice to see the, the supporting forest products and, and, uh, to have a business in town like that, I think was Mr. Johnson said. So our comments aren't, aren't targeting what you're doing. It's, you have to remember, we're looking at this, this is a commercial zone, not an industrial zone. And, um, I've driven from Cranby myself and go by there and I see you're kind of going in more of a, outside of a commercial. And so you're kind of on the edge there with some, you know, a lot of stuff was in the front, did I own a pine in your back. So I agree with the commission that I would like to see a more detailed plan.
Kind of.
You know, yeah, that's not here, that's not there. I mean, we need to see what the details are.
Okay.
On the plan.
Yeah.
The other is, I also echo, I would not be inclined to support temporary carports. Again, this, a special permit is not a temporary thing. They're, uh, they typically run with the land. So we're looking at this not just for your, but any applicant. So I, I think I agree with the commission. I reconsider that. And whether it's a Morton building or a, a wooden lean to something that's a little bit more permanent and aesthetic.
Like a timber frame almost, like a?
Something, you know, if they're not, not these temporary structures.
Yeah, no, I can be, no, I just didn't know. Yeah, that's, that's fine. That's fine. I think we make a.
That's just my suggestion, you know.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's, it's interesting because almost I would be the other way. You know, I would think that if I had a nice timber frame, it would've been harder to, to get approval for than a temporary, you know, five-year carport to get into the Morton building, you know, so.
Yeah, we're looking, we don't approve, uh, in land use. It's not, you know, you can have these and we hope that you, because you could sell the property tomorrow, there could be carports there for, uh, for, uh, ever.
Obviously.
It's, not that I'm against carports, but as a business.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So I think that those are some of the comments you heard, um, from the commission, which I would, I would agree with. And just in general, I think define a little bit your back. If you're putting wood chips back there, it sounds like, I'm not an engineer or technical person, but that doesn't sound like a long-term fix. Sounds like it can be processed or something back there.
Well, if we put a building up here, absolutely it'd be different.
Yeah, but just, you know, I think we have to look at if you're bringing a lot of traffic in there. So just look at some of the details, I think. We're gonna give the chance for the public to make a comment. Any other commission questions?
All right.
Staff, but we'll, we'll let you speak again. We're gonna open it up for any of the public.
Sure.
Any members of the public like to speak in this application? Please come forward. Let's swatch the, uh, are you with him?
No.
Oh, can you sit, you can sit down.
Yeah. One of my concerns was the, uh, increased noise level from, they removed the natural barrier of all of these trees now. And before they even started doing any of the work, the fence was in disrepair already. It wasn't, no consideration was given to even considering that to try to minimize some of the noise from the work they were doing. So between the noise and any of the, the pollution, dust pollution, noise pollution, whatever, uh, could affect the neighborhood behind them. And I was just wondering what considerations are given to the rest of the neighborhood besides just the business? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeff Salinardi. I live at seventeen East Street. My property is the, uh, the house that's on the corner of East Street and Route ten. I have the Red Farm. I'm concerned about the level of, uh, activity that has gone on on that property that doesn't quite seem to match a person, um, making wood slabs or furniture items. What I'm seeing is a lot of equipment being brought in and it being told to the commission now that he owns it, but I see ads on Facebook Marketplace with all this equipment for sale. So I'm not quite sure where the disconnect in communication with that is, but from what I'm seeing on the market, these things are for sale. Even the trailers, which was directly asked, um, they may be registered to him, but nonetheless, they're for sale. So there may be some shell maneuvering as far as, um, how these things are being acquired and, uh, well, basically he's trying to sell things there, which is great. It's just that, is this a wood slab business or is this an equipment business? And is this equipment business really fitting in this space? So to, it sounded almost like the place was a wetland when he first moved in because it was flooded. And now he's loaded it with three feet of wood chips, which obviously no one would build that way, um, long-term. It's just load a place with wood chips, which, I have concerns with all this equipment now. If you have wood chips, are, and there's an oil leak, does it just drain into the wood chips for six months and then eventually someone realizes when the well's contaminated? Or just, there's just a lot of ragtag operation going over there. And as a neighbor, I'm concerned with my friends and neighbors who are direct behind him. And it doesn't sound to me like he's been there for two years. He hasn't addressed these neighbors at all. He's just kind of keeps bringing in, bringing in, bringing in. He's literally running a sawmill operation and if, that's what I'm gonna describe it as. I mean, that's what I can see. I see a full-scale sawmill. I can quote an ad from, from, uh, again, Facebook Marketplace saying, "We have pine, uh, we have pine, maple, walnut in stock. Milling is portable. If you want to bring in your logs, we will saw them for you." W W dot New England pine dot com. So as much as it's, uh, um, you know, I'm milling tabletops and that kind of thing, this is also a sawmilling operation. And my friends and neighbors live right there. And I don't agree with the fact that someone has a sawmill running. Whether my neighbors are at work or not, you know, this site is not really designed to be a sawmill. So I have concerns with that. I guess we'll start with that and, uh, I'll, I'll yield, but, uh, I like the idea. When he first moved in, I introduced myself to him. I said, "This is cool. You know, we're gonna have a guy selling forest shoe products." But it just keeps like going in all these different directions. And the plan, as was mentioned, is very vague. I stopped by today and looked at the plan and now we're pointing over here saying that, no, that's not gonna be like that. That's not gonna be like that. Well, that kind of thing doesn't fly, especially, especially with someone who has a record already of walking into a space and just kind of exploding onto it and doing what he wants. You know, people have lived here. They live right there. If you go out there, these homes are fifty feet back, you know, they're, they're modest homes with people just going to work every day and they don't, they don't want a sawmill in their backyard. I know they don't. So. That's what, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to us from the audience? Chance anyone on Zoom? See anybody? We not chance anyone else in the crowd, attendees? Could you come back up, sir? Just, uh, do you have any comments in, um, what was said?
No, I mean, I can clarify a, a bunch of things. We plain wood, we sand wood, we mill wood. Yes, it's part of the.
What about the, how much, how much your business selling vehicles?
We don't sell.
Or V, equipment, sorry. Like rolling, rolling stock, not chainsawers or?
We, yeah, we sell grapple orders. We sell it. We sell grapple orders, we sell off-road trailers. That's part of the business. Absolutely. It's, it's a product line that we sell. Absolutely.
Abby, just from, on that, that zone and the existing use is, what's going on? Is that covered under the, uh, permitted use from the tire store prior?
I'd have to look at that in more detail.
Okay.
From the sawing standpoint, there's a photo in the packet that shows a substantial pile of logs out back, you know, quite a bit of board put there. Why do you carry so much?
Yeah, good question. So I, uh, that's not typical. We had a Blue Rock, we're doing lane clearing on Route twenty and they, they offered and said, "If you could drop logs off here, would you take them?" Yes, I will. So half of those are gonna be brought off-site for the firewood. We don't sell firewood or process firewood, so we'll get rid of that. And then the saw logs will remain on-site.
Well, are you, are you a log, brokerage law, you know, wood yard?
No.
Are you bringing logs in and then selling off to brokers?
No, I sell logs.
And, um, you know, if you let those piles of logs stick around too long.
Correct.
They create for dens for critters and.
Correct.
Next thing you know, you have raccoons, possums, whatever.
Correct.
Bobcats.
Yeah.
You know, so large volumes of logs, if it's not necessary, you know, might be.
Yeah, we're breaking that down. We're actively actually breaking that down.
Yeah.
Yeah, understood.
I'll just kind of read it again, just to go over, when we say for the detailed plans is when we have a, an advocate's plan order, the, the site plan, that's how your business. So if you say you're gonna do this, commission approves, that's where you have to be. You can't in two months go over here.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, the site plans are very important.
Yeah, so we can do like a, to scale site plan, you know, with the, instead of the green blocks, like your gear, we can do it to scale.
That's.
Yeah, that's a problem. Yeah.
Not sure whether we could do this, but how about a business plan? So we know exactly what is happening on that property.
Sure.
Okay, I think that might clarify for a lot of. Okay, I think that might clarify for a lot of people.
Yeah, like what are, what do we do as our operations?
Yes, exactly. So we know exactly what was being done. I think that would clarify, because I'm a little fuzzy on it now, too. As I said, I love your wood products, but we can't have a sawmill in the, I don't think in this area, doesn't look like it's a, the right, uh, property to have a sawmill, so.
You might be, Paula, just, uh, you might be, similar question for Abby is what you're asking for, is it conforming to the permitted use for that zone, right? And what's there?
Yeah.
Is that, I think that's a similar, um, question.
So yes, one of the questions would be, um, in terms of that operation, I was under the impression that most of that was inside your active operation. So you're not planning and milling outside of the parking lot.
Nope, we're not planning, milling inside. And that, and part of that, you know, builds more operations inside.
So that's, when I, um, we initially visited the site and I looked at the zoning regulations, we're operating under that, it was a commercial use because they do have the retail component. Kind of the, what could be considered more industrial piece of it is inside and it's accessory to the retail. Now, certainly the special permit tonight and doesn't address any sort of outdoor activities aside from the storage. Um, so there shouldn't be any active woodwork outside the building.
We're going to keep, go ahead.
So I just offer just a few things that I'd like to see, uh, come back before us for additional consideration. Things like a detailed, more detailed site plan, we've talked about that, that is very specific, fine with, uh, building structures, equipment, storage, log storage, designated locations, um, very specific, very detailed. Hours of operation, I don't know that I've seen anything in here referencing, uh, proposed hours of operations for outdoor running of equipment that are resident-friendly and limited. Uh, you mentioned suggestions for berms and other things. I'd like to see, uh, a site plan that includes those berms, uh, heavy fencing and screening for residences, as well as the, potentially even the two commercial properties that are on the left and right side. I'd like to see a trash management plan, understanding how the property is going to be maintained during operation. And I, you know, one thing I didn't see on this, is there a dumpster on-site?
Yeah.
Okay. Making sure that, uh, we understand, it's very common for a commercial application to have a trash management plan, understanding how, um, trash is going to be dealt with on the site during daily operations. Things are, uh, I'll start with that. And again, I want to echo some of the comments. I'm a wood-friendly guy, I think I'm a three-chain saw and enjoy forestry products, slab wood and whatnot. This is not meant to be overly restrictive, but you're in a difficult spot because you back up a residential neighborhood. Uh, so we do have to make sure that we take all of that into consideration and find a happy balance that allows you to operate, that allows your neighbors to have some peace.
Sure, understand.
Good.
Yep.
How much milling really goes on?
Twenty-four hour day or you have?
Eight hours a day, two hours a day, what?
Uh, four hours a week.
Four a week?
If, weather permits.
Yeah.
We're closed Wednesday, we close at two on Saturday, we're closed on Sunday. Typically, we're running, so we do portal milling, but it's not there. We go somewhere and mail for people, right? We offer that service, it's, it's portable. All here on site, it's usually, it's weather-preventing. Uh, I'm the only guy that runs it. I run this business upstairs, I run a woodworking shop downstairs. That's, you know, so it's a, it's a very, like, contained thing, right? So we, it's not something, and, and you could come by all the time to look, you'll see, you know, you could put a camera there and see.
Can you clarify though, with the milling on site, it's weather permitting? So it's not inside?
No, like if I mill outside, for example, I will, I won't mill in the rain, I won't mill in the cold.
Like your photo, your photo shows the sawmill sawing outside.
Portal, portal.
Portal sawmill.
There are sawmill, sawing outside.
Sawing outside in front of the log pile.
Yeah, I can't fit it in my garage, so.
Okay, so, sorry. So that was my initial question. So there is some activity going on outside the building that's not totally enclosed in terms of milling and your woodworking?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because a couple minutes ago, it was, everything was inside.
Yeah.
Yeah, I drove by and I guess it, there's a lot of stuff going on outside, so we'll have to address that, right, as part of.
Well, we've got a noise issue now.
Yeah.
You're gonna be carrying on stuff on the outside, you've got a noise issue in the residential area.
So I mentioned the hours.
This is not, this is not like a, this is not a commercial sawmill operation. It's not, I'm clarifying for the record, so we all on the same page. It's not, you know, a 60 horsepower diesel, uh, Meadows sawmill that you've run up at Great Brook Lumber, so it's nothing like that. This is a portable woodmiser, it's got a 25 horsepower gas engine, it is quieter than half the trucks that come down the road, it's way quieter than the leaf blowers that blow leaves next door. You know, it's, it's a small thing. I mean, so, and you can see that, we could turn on and you could, you can hear everything around me and you'll see.
I think you'll, you'll hear, we talked to staff some more, whatever, it's not a, a current use that you're permitted for.
Understood, understood.
So, so it's kind of us hearing it tonight, it's not in your application. Um, so we're gonna have to.
Add it.
Well, I don't know if it's a new application, he's already had it in here, so we'll have to, I'll have to have staff discuss that with you. Um, because there's a lot, I have a lot of more open items now, I think, Abby, I think you might, too.
And to add to Eric's list, Eric, let's make sure we know what activities are going on, when and where on the property.
We're, we're, we're going to keep the hearing open.
Sure.
And then for these, uh, items we discussed, and then they'll allow you to speak again to the items and, and you'll, in the meantime, have a discussion with, uh, with Abby on this and, um, we'll see where he goes. Anything else to add?
Nope.
And so we will keep the public hearing open. Uh, I anticipate we will continue March 12th, but we're not to permit. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is receive applications and schedule public hearings. Uh, we'll just start with the first two. First was an application for zone change from, uh, center edge to commercial center at Salmon Brooks, 254 56 Salmon Brooks Street. Abby, that was the gentleman that was here in January.
Yes.
In formal discussion.
Yep.
So he's, uh, submitted a formal application.
Correct.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
For clarification, I, I, I think all of us would like, I think the public, many of the public that have had an interest in this, would like to be able to see what our zones are, exactly where they are on one piece of paper and on the other, what is permitted use to, because it's in our regulations, but it, it, you go through and then you, you kind of, sometimes you don't absorb it as well as you should. And I think this might help us work with this. And those that are, you know, interested in calling your office and probably get a copy too.
So with that application, um, because it is a zone change, there's a requirement that a sign be posted 15 days in advance of the notice. Um, so having received the application tonight, there wouldn't be enough time for the, uh, March 12th, um, meeting date. So we are looking at March 26th to, to open the public hearing for that, if the commission is in agreement.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Next is application for a site plan modification for property of 13 East Granby Road for a parking lot, uh, for that fourth place. Abby, just a little background, it looks like that's in the back of, uh, kind of behind the, um, ice cream place and into, in the barn, that strip in there?
Correct, yep. So this is to expand the parking lot, so it would connect at the barn parking to, uh, grassroots parking, um, back there. Um, so it is a site plan application. Um, I have already reviewed the site plan, the applicant has already made one round of revisions, it's in pretty good shape, so I would recommend a public hearing for that on March 12th.
Who, who is the applicant for that? You said two different, two, a joint, two different properties? Who's the actual applicant?
So because work is on four-part place and it's actually technically still 13 East Granby Road, there are two applicants.
Okay.
And they have both signed off on the application.
They are.
And they're working together, yeah.
A joint application, so to speak.
Yes.
We'll do that March 12th?
Mm-hmm.
Did they ever get the temporary freezer out of there or?
Yes.
Wonder where that was?
No.
No?
No. The, uh, temporary freezer, that was on permanent, uh, landscaped green space for grassroots. This is, it's kind of in the backyard of 13 East Granby Road. It's a white house, uh, that's right down the road from that.
Okay. Our next one, I said at the beginning, I'd, uh, make a comment because there's a lot of interest. Um, there's a pending application, uh, for this multi, uh, development, for multifamily development at 37 Hartford Avenue. So there's an, there is an application that is submitted for a 42-unit multifamily development at 37 Hartford Avenue in the commercial center zone. While a multifamily development in the zone generally requires special permit approval under our zoning regulations, this application has been submitted under the Connecticut statute, section 8-30G. As an 830G application, elect to have it treated as a site plan application, which is different, uh, evaluation criteria by the commission. As a site plan application, once received by the Plan and Zoning Commission, the commission has 65 days to render its decision. Further, under state statute, this timeframe can be extended if the 65 days would elapse prior to a decision that's required by the inland and wetlands water course commission. In which case, if there is a wetlands decision, an extra 35 days to decide after the inland and wetlands water course commission decides is granted. There's some questions on the, uh, timing for this application, given that the applicant has submitted to the inland wetlands and water course commission and that public hearing is still open. Under state statute, applicant can submit to Plan and Zoning Commission prior to a decision on an application by inland and wetlands. Not just this one, any applicant may do. So the two commission process can run simultaneously. Therefore, the Plan and Zoning Commission is able to accept and by state statute has to accept this application tonight, because this is our regularly scheduled meeting. Furthermore, given the 65-day time period within which the commission has to make a decision, in order to commission give time to review and evaluate the application and allow for a public hearing process, the commission will decide tonight, uh, about having the applicant first present at a future meeting, then hold a public hearing at a later date. And that's what we're going to discuss at this time. So just wanted to explain that the applicant is allowed under state statute to apply while wetlands is still ongoing. It does affect the timing and gives the commission some extra time if the wetlands process goes on. So that being said, we, uh, we will have further information on the 8, uh, 830G process. It does differ for zoning, uh, regulation process. And I've asked, uh, Abby from our community development staff to work on some information for the commission and the public prior to our meetings, uh, because there is a different criteria for the public hearing information that the commission can consider as it, uh, reviews the application. So tonight, we do have the application seeking a site plan approval under Connecticut statutes, 830G for 42-unit multifamily development for 37 Hartford Avenue. As I stated in, uh, the comments, um, the inland wetlands process is still ongoing. I believe their next meeting is March 13th, is that correct, Abby?
Yes.
Our meeting is March 12th. I would like the commission to consider that we do not open the public hearing on the 12th because of the wetlands process is going on, but we do have the applicant to do their presentation to the commission, to go through their application for us. We would then, uh, schedule a public hearing after that date. We do have a, uh, significant, I think significant hearing for the center zone on the 26th, so I would consider that we would want to open a public hearing on April the 9th. Um, Abby, does that make sense from a timing standpoint?
Yes.
So we would have the applicant present on the 12th of March at our meeting. Uh, would not be a public hearing, there would be no public comment, just the presentation of the applicant of their application. We would then hold a public hearing after inland wetlands water course meeting, which is on the 13th, but we would actually hold it on our first April meeting of April 9th. Again, allows us to have our other public hearing, six for the center, which I think is an important hearing, so. Is the commission okay with that timing that I've outlined?
Yes.
Is it conceivable that the wetlands commission's decision could make, uh, the application move? Abby, if inland wetlands were to make a decision that, say they didn't approve it, would that make this application move, was the question?
The commission, as my understanding, would still have to take some action on it.
Which, okay, I'm just wondering if, if we, you know, we're asking the applicant to go through the whole process on the 12th and then, you know, the wetlands commission may, you know, say no, in which case, you know, do we have to have a whole hearing on it? I think the applicant, and again, I will defer to staff, applicant was advised of that, uh, risk.
And elected to do it this way?
Yes, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So Abby, so we'll, we'll have the applicant present on March 12th and then, um, we will have a public hearing on April 9th. Did I miss anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, item number eight, consideration of applications where the commission has concluded the public hearing. We have concluded one public hearing tonight, which was for the special permit for the residential ground mount solar. I thought the application was fine, it met the, uh, regulations we have. Abby did reinforce that, uh, per the regulation, if it was to be disused, it has to, uh, be moved, so that's on the record. Any other comments?
Seems straightforward.
Commercial solar, I know that some jurisdictions require, uh, decommissioning bonds to back up that obligation to remove. I did not see that in our regs for residential. I don't know if that's something we could request or even want to request. It may seem an overkill for a house.
Um, yeah, it's something we could look at, uh, definitely not for this application because it's not in our regulations. Um, I'm a little hesitant to get into the position of accepting or requiring bonds for that, just in terms of managing it. Um, we can give it some thought.
Okay. Those, yeah, otherwise I'm, I'm fine with this application. That being said, I'll look for a motion to approve the application.
They'll move.
Second.
Uh, uh, Mr. Myers, did you want to say something?
Nope. I was gonna propose, I was gonna propose the application that included the stipulation about the removal, but if we don't need to, we'll.
Do we need to include the stipulations in the regulations?
It's in the regulations.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the application as presented this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the application is passed. Uh, we did not close the public hearing on, um, the outdoor storage, so that will be continued till the March 12th meeting. Next on our agenda, item number nine, informal pre-application discussion for a proposed two-lot subdivision of 200K Street, formerly part of 186K Street and open space. Prior, we'll have the applicant or the discussion come up. Uh, the commission is not taking any action to, this is in front of us, this is just an informal discussion, uh, which the commission encourages proposed applicants to do. So we'll invite the presenting parties to come up. You're here?
Do you want me to go over a minute, uh, give you the subject, but I want to talk about the open space. You have to go.
I, I don't, you presented all this, you.
Stanley Curtis, I live at 201K Street, which is across the street from, uh, 200K Street. My grandfather had a farm there, they had a farm, 30 acres on one side of the street, which they divided up and I live in the farmhouse, which is on that side of the street. And I live in the farmhouse, which is on that side of the street. Also, I own another house, which was my mother's on that side of the street. Now, off the side of the street, we had 86 acres, which we did. And Matt owns that currently, so we're down to 20 acres. Trying to resolve the family farm, most of the people, everybody except me and my son, you know, want to continue farming. Everybody else is spread around the state, and they just want to sell. They would have preferred to sell, you know, the entire 86 acres at one time. But Matt came up to us buying hay one day, came up with a plan that he purchased part of it for himself. And included in that was five-acre building lot, which is behind the fields on K Street. We always want to protect the fields. And we came before the board last year, I think it was, to do a real lot. But the board informed us that real lots are not available on K Street. So we talked with Abby and town engineer and came up with a way to do the real lot. I guess it's 100 foot frontage, and it goes back like 75 or 100 feet, then it goes down to 75 feet, another 75 feet, then it goes down to 20 feet or 15 feet, there remain 500 feet back to where the house was being built. I guess that's agreeable to the town engineer. But we wanted to talk about the open space requirements, there's 20 acres, and we want to continue farming. And originally, we thought we could just restrict the deed to satisfy the open space by stating that it's going to be used for agriculture, but that's not sufficient. My son is a farmer, and we'll be buying that 15 acres of the 20 acres that remain and put it in my son's name, Christopher. Like to do an agricultural easement on the property, where of the 15 acres, 13 acres would be for agriculture, and two acres were infrastructure development. Infrastructure would be a barn, probably like 40 feet, 500 feet, mostly for hay storage, also for storage of the equipment, storage and repair. Currently, putting scattered around my yard and across the street, we'd like to get away from the road, near the barn, you know, and have a good place to work out the equipment in the winter, keep the hay. Currently, we have tarps over the hay and stuff. We have some in the barn, but tarps don't really work that great, gets moisture under there, be a lot nicer. We like to sell the hay, a lot of it, and a lot of it we use for ourselves. We do round bales for our own agricultural purposes. We have four steers last year, and we have four steers this year, and I think we've got six steers next year. We graze them behind my house and also 15 acres across the street. And we do round bales to keep them through the winter, and we bale square bales to sell to the general public. They also have chickens that we sell the eggs. And Chris does maple syrup, and we begin a maple syrup business also. Difficult farming in these rural areas these years because a lot of the fields get used up for building, you know. Even in town, here we got, you set a nice field on Route 20, now this house is there across from the high school. There's apartments there. Of course, we have that big area on East Street that the town owns. But the cost of property and the availability of farmland is tough. So Chris actually does farm 40 acres of fields, strictly fields, 40 acres. Does this throughout the town of Granby and Canton. We have about seven acres between my houses and across the street. And then he, he farms another down street, Vladimir Vigoris at 141K Street. He does a couple acres there. 44, 444 Cherry Brook Road in Canton, owned by Lisa Schribner. They'd like another four acres, they farms there and cuts the hay. 51 Russell Meadow Lane in Canton. I don't know if you know where the graveyard is in North Canton, but there's like a horse development down there. There's a field there that Chris started doing last year. 198R Salmonburg Street, owned by Maple View Farm. I think you know them, they sell Christmas trees sometimes down there, Salmonburg, they have that brewery now. He farms back there, he cuts the hay on that, there. 5 Orchard Road in Granby, which is just going up 219 on the right, Orchard Road. He feels out there, he farms also. 16 Ridge Road in Canton, Harold Freitag just passed on about a couple of weeks ago. It's just half mile from our house. He farms four acres there. 78 and 80 Day Street, they used to have the llamas there on Day Street, over by the Granby Oak. He farms those fields there. And 69K Street in Canton, which is halfway down to the, on the Canton side. Lisa Schribner again, she has horses, but she has a field there that he takes. So he farms 40 acres, but it's spread all over the place. He needs, using our infrastructure, and that's why we're buying 15 acres to put his barn there with his equipment and something in his own name. But we wanted to do an easement on the property to satisfy the open space requirement, which Abby thought was possible. Agricultural easement, based on the regulations. But the State of Connecticut says the application process takes two years before you get a final decision. So we wanted to post the barns for the fee in lieu of, for open space. And if the application gets approved, then use the agricultural easement to satisfy the open space requirement. If the easement's denied, then the town would have to bond to cover the fee in lieu. It's not specifically stated in regulations, there is a section in regulations that says, what's it called? Phased development, right. It doesn't say phased residential development, it says phased development. I talked to my cousin who's an engineer this afternoon, and it says that usually when you have a road, I guess, and you have houses, you build them along the road and sell those over time. But no, no one ever considers agriculture, or what a phased development is for agriculture, you know. It says phased development, so I'm just taking, it's like a phased project, phased development. We have a building lot that a person wants to live in, you know, a house there, five acres. Then we have the 15 acres, that's raw land, but we want to have infrastructure, we want to use this existing farm road that we want to repair, and then we want to build a barn, want to get the agricultural easement. No, it all takes time. We have to go to wetlands after my son owns, get approval to use the farm road. We have to, of course, get approval to put the barn there, wetlands, which is no fee requirement. But it's phased in over time, we can't just do it all at one time. And of course, the easement process is two years, we have, you know, no control over the state of Connecticut. If they say it takes up to two years, and we can't settle an easement tomorrow, it's just going to take time. And we agree with Abby on most everything she said in her memo, except one thing, is she said the easement would have to be settled immediately on the subdivision of the five acres, which is impossible. Just doesn't happen. I don't know if you want to talk to Chris? Can I call him, Chris? Chris, I talked to you before, he's a member of the 4H, he works with Holy Cows. He's an assistant leader to Don.
Just to go through, we have a lot of things here. What is, what's the, what are you trying to get the commission's feel for? What's, what were you, there's a lot of things here.
We have a young farmer here that wants to own the 15 acres and have a farm.
That's, you're asking for something in the regulation, or what's?
Yeah, I think I said that a few minutes ago.
So what's, we have a couple of things.
In lieu of.
Staff has responded. Yeah, so are you looking to change the regulations?
The regulation says, says phased development, you can post a barn to cover the open space. And it doesn't say phased residential development.
It's like, it's staff, you want to touch that case?
Sure. Yeah, so it's my interpretation that this is not a phased development. You have one building lot, you're looking for, or it would be a subdivision application to create two building lots. So it's, you know, I think back to some of the previous developments that have been approved in phases, and it refers to a further division of lots. But in this case, there wouldn't be any further division of lots, from what I understand.
Yeah, but it's not a building lot, there's only one building lot. You said there'd be two building lots, there's not two building lots.
Well, you have one piece of property and you're splitting it in two.
Two parcels, correct.
There are two, there are two building lots, though, right?
Two parcels.
Yeah, two parcels.
Two parcels.
It's not a building lot, we don't plan on building a house there.
It's not what you planned, but it's on paper, it's, could be a building lot, right? Four acres?
Yes, it would meet the requirement of the zoning regulation, at least for acreage. We don't know in terms of engineering, with well and septic and whatnot.
Went to wetlands, and I guess they, they have some kind of, there's no agreed way to get lands to do a building lot, but there is access to the property that there could potentially be a building lot if somehow you got wetlands to agree.
So, so phased development, and that piece of it, in your view, we would have, that's not allowed under the current regulations?
Correct, because I don't believe that this meets what would be considered a phased development to allow the posting of a barn.
So there'd have to be a text amendment change to that?
Yes, to address this situation.
After looking at the agricultural easement, and I have to, full disclosure, I'm a member of the board on the Granby Land Trust, as is Sarah. But have you thought of going to the Granby Land Trust and seeing whether they could accept an agricultural easement?
I have contacted them, but they haven't got back to me. It was around Christmas time, December. But Chris wants to own the 15 acres, you know. We do the fee in lieu of, if that's what we have to do. But we would prefer that the, use the agricultural easement, which is part of the regulations, to fulfill the open space. It's just the agricultural easement, it takes two years to get approved, it's not something that gets approved tomorrow.
Abby, I understand from your memo that the easement's, that's a proper way, but we can't do that without, the easement has to be in place first. 480 days, you said.
Right, so how the regulation works, at the time of application, there has to be some sort of verification or confirmation from the entity that they're willing to accept the easement. It doesn't have to be finalized, because it probably wouldn't be until the commission approves it. But once the commission approves a subdivision application, the applicant has 90 days on the land records, and it can be extended another 90 days. So that gives 180 days to finalize any sort of loose ends that need to be tied up for easement or anything else. But if that, the timeframe for that program doesn't work within 180 days, I don't know how the commission would be able to approve that, or they could approve it, and the applicant can try, just knowing that if it doesn't work within that 180 days, they would have to resubmit and start again.
What about other easements, such as Paul mentioned, those, or those, has to have to be a state easement to count?
So there are, in the regulations, it outlines entities that are, would be acceptable. And it mentions the land trust deep, and I think there's some reference to, you know, similar or comparable. So, you know, in my opinion, again, looking at the state department, permanent preservation program, it would certainly fall under one of that, but.
Yeah, I think we're pretty set that we do the easement through the State of Connecticut. There's a very new program through the State of Connecticut for farms under 30 acres. In the past, we would not be able to do that. But this current year, 2024, there's a new program for farms under 30 acres, and that's the easement that we would do. If the, if we cannot do that, we'd like to, you know, do fee in lieu of. And we don't know why we can't just use the property card to 186K Street for the rate for fee in lieu of. We're told that we have to get an appraiser, because the town hasn't appraised the 20 acres yet. So we have a difficulty there too. I don't see why we have to put out money for an appraiser. It's already a property, 6K Street, it's not property card for 200K Street, which isn't even a real acreage yet.
So what's being referred to is, so under the regulations, on the commission, if there's a fee in lieu of open space proposed, there can, the commission can agree to use the value that's established on the property card instead of hiring an appraiser, because otherwise, the applicant and the town have to agree on an appraiser, and then at the applicant's expense, they have the property appraised to establish the value of it. In this case, because it is a free split, so you have 186K Street, 66 acres, and then you have the remaining 200 acres. That hasn't, that piece of the property card hasn't yet been created through our town assessor. So we don't have any value for that property. So what's being asked is if you could use the 180, the value for 186, perhaps divide by the number, you know, get a price per acre based off of that and apply it to this. But again, it's not in the regulations, because there's no, the assessor hasn't looked at the 20 acre remaining to establish the value.
When does the assessor usually do that?
I don't know, and she's, yeah.
I think she said April, I talked to her.
So that would be an option, it sounds like that's an option, so if, if you want to use the fee with that value, wait till the assessor does the value for that, that card.
Yeah, but we have the developer here that wants to get started building the house on the property, because the person's already been, this has been going around for almost two years now. And the person that wants to buy that five acres and have a house and have his kids go to Granby schools, wasn't able to do, wasn't able to do it last year, and he's trying to build the house, but this year, I think he wants to come to you next, you know, on March 12th, possibly, subdivision plan to get approved, so we can start.
I think you have to put the application in, it has to be in already. It takes a few weeks' process.
So to make this work, what are the steps that have to happen, Abby? So that there could be some resolution to the.
Well, I mean, quite honestly, the path of least resistance is wait until the property card is created to establish the value, come in with a subdivision application and propose a fee in lieu of open space. Or if, you know, they don't want to wait until the property card is created, then, you know, we can discuss hiring an appraiser. Again, that's an added cost.
It's hard to find him.
Abby, I'm wondering, if the applicant has to go through the fee in lieu of process, is there any way that the fee in lieu of can be returned if it turns out that the state in its two-year process comes back positively?
Right, and there's no provision in the regulation to, for such an arrangement. So once the fee in lieu of is received, it goes into the open space fund, which can be used by the town to purchase open space. So it's not earmarked, or it can't be returned. There would have to be, I would think, some provision added to the regulation to, to allow that.
All right, so we'd have to fiddle with the regulations in order to have it be returnable.
Correct.
Which would be difficult, because you'd have to have a time limit, so the town knows if they can use the money for an open space.
Yep.
Before the free split?
Yes.
The 86.24 acres had a card on it, correct?
Yes.
And I read something in the package with regard to whatever was being assessed for the full 86 acres. I suppose a rough membership, a rough number could be just simply dividing the amount of the assessment over the 86 acres.
I don't, I don't know how the town assessor comes up with that. Like, I honestly don't know if that's what she does, or if she looks at, you know, percentage. Like, I honestly don't know if that's what she does, or if she looks at, you know, percentage of wetlands on one piece, like, I, I don't even want to fathom a guess, to be honest.
Smart. It's like a question.
Usable acres versus not usable.
I don't know what goes into it.
I understand, Abby, that, is it April? That process?
I, I have not spoken with her, because she's out on, she's out on leave for, for a few weeks, so that's a conversation that...
Because it sounds like the application has a way to go yet, and by, like, the April. So we're saying, like, you might, I don't see, one of the current regulations, you're going to get anything faster, as Abby said, until probably April or May, because you have to get this process done, or hire an appraiser, put your application in, plans, we schedule it, do we have to do a hearing?
So it's not required, because it's a subdivision, however, the commission typically will...
Typically have a hearing, so there's a public hearing, which is a two-week. So there's a process that might be, that might be the fastest way, so. Does the easement through the, it doesn't sound like the, you wanted to stay with the state easement, not the land trust or anything, right?
Right, what happens, they file the, they put an application in with the state of Connecticut, they evaluate it to determine if you in fact even qualify, and if you qualify, then they put it on the, the applica, they record the application on the town records, and then it takes up to two years by the time they do their appraisals, whatever else they do.
But would another easement satisfy what you're trying to do, or you want that one for whatever reason?
Yeah, just that one. We've, we've, we've gone through this since 2019, various easements, and talking to various land trusts and so forth, it's been going on for five years now and that, so we're down to the final point, and we've already decided that that would be the state of Connecticut, the brand new program for farms under 30 acres, and Chris being a beginner farmer, probably look favorably on granting him an easement to assist him in purchasing the property at the farm. There's no guarantee.
There's no guarantee for that easement.
No guarantee.
Right, so...
That's why we were going to post the bond, so that the town would get their money upfront, and if the easement was turned down, then they would keep the money, if it was kept in, if it got approved, that it would be applied to the open space, as in the regulations. Maybe the regulations need to change.
That's an option, you can put in a text amendment, but again, that takes time as well.
I'm not sure if the developer wants to talk about his timeframe, I know his family wants to move into that property.
He's welcome to, but I don't think it's going to change the, we can't accelerate, if you have an application, even if you were ready to go, you'd still probably be into April or May before you keep your ground.
It's the same old thing, the town doesn't care about...
That's true, sir.
The president of Granby's got to pay out money, we have a family farm, now we're going to put out money to appraise this little piece of property, but to pay for the fee in lieu of, even though we're now developing this 16 acres, we still got to pay for the open space. I agree with you. Thank you.
Any comments?
No, I'm sorry.
We, we want to support the farm, but we have to follow the regulations. If I want to change the regulations, you know, this, any applicant wants to look at changing the applications, we're willing to file a text amendment, but there's a process, we have to allow the public to comment on them. I believe the applicant came last year for a, we had a discussion about K Street and rear lots, and it's a process that we have to follow, so. Feel for the applicant, want us, we all want to support agriculture on the processes, right? And I think there's, sounds like, Abby, from your memo, and with the assessor, there's possibly a process that could happen, start as soon as April, if the assessor gets back, right? So with our schedule and the way things go, that's probably the fastest route, I would agree.
Yeah.
Ask a question.
Sure, just come on up.
Yeah, sure. Do you guys know, Matt Reel, 96, Dando Trace Burlington, do you guys know when she's due back in April, like, April 1st or April 30th, like?
I, I don't know.
But that's sort of a problem?
You wouldn't go into the office and...
I did, I asked for the, I actually asked a lady that works there, I don't, is it Denise? Elise? She's still there? So I talked to Elise, I asked her, because she's sort of running the department, because there's, someone's out for a couple of months, so I asked her to see if she could get an appraisal on that 20 acres. So she, I thought it'd be simple math, too, to be honest with you, I don't think it's that, all that land is sort of, it's rock and wetlands. The one thing that we've put as a stipulation is there's two fields, sort of behind the barn. So you might see it on your map. So if we buy the five acre piece that we're trying to get approved, and it gets approved, we have, we need to have in writing that those fields won't be developed for residential use, houses, whatever, so we're sort of trying to, we'll try to preserve those two fields with the purchase.
So, I mean, one thought would be, you could do a lot line revision, so between your 66 acres and the 20 acres, you basically carve out the piece that you're going to want, and then you handle the subdivision application with carving out the five acre piece from your somewhat larger piece now.
You mean, sort of, put the, will we purchase?
Well, you would have to obviously work with them, but it'd be a lot line revision.
I'm not, I'm not really following you. What do you mean?
We can talk off the record.
You can revise, you can move the line in your lot?
Yep.
Because you get the free, it's the first cut, right? In that first cut line, you can move.
Correct.
All right, and I would suggest, maybe set up an appointment with, with Abby, and she can walk you through it, right?
Okay, the only reason I'm confused, and I don't, because we already purchased that
No, but you can do a lot line revision, as long as you're not creating another building lot.
Okay, I follow you. To add to my piece...
So you would basically add five acres into your piece, and then you would handle resolving whatever open space requirement needs to be met, when you want to carve the five acres out of your piece.
Right, but wouldn't that be, then we would have roughly, say, 70 some acres that you've got to deal with?
Correct.
And that would be a lot more.
It, it would be.
Yeah.
But again, that would, at least, that would enable what they want to do with their farming piece, and that's something that you could work out with them.
Yeah, I just don't see it being a viable option, because then 20% of 70 some acres is a lot different.
Sure, it is.
So that's why we did the free cut, the way we did it, you know? Just because I don't plan on developing it, so it doesn't...
So there's, there's other easements, and I, I know there's reasons why you want to go to state for, for, he does.
I'm just, I'm just saying, if we could talk to maybe Elise, if, I'm saying her name right, so if you just took the card and you divided the acres, like the gentleman was saying, it seems pretty, it's close.
I would suggest, because we have another informant, I would suggest to, you know, get with Abby and staff, because you can get with the town manager on the situation with the assessor, because there, there's other people that need assessment work in town, so I don't have any information about it, but I suggest check, check still this week, and on the process for getting that assessment done.
Right.
I'm sure there's, there's some...
I mean, if we knew it was April 1st, it'd be one thing, but it might not be, so, I mean...
I would just suggest to check, check tomorrow, and, you know, we have, you know...
When I spoke to Elise, she, when I spoke to Elise, she said she was going to take care of it, but...
I get it.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I did.
Assistant's office, well...
I'm just saying, I spoke to her, it was about two weeks ago, roughly, I haven't heard anything, but she said she was going to do a valid, so...
I would just say, check back with the office, and, yeah, we want to try to find a solution for you within our, our regs, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Good luck. Okay, item number 10, informal discussion for special event venue banquet facility at 335 Salmon Brook Street.
Hi, John, North Block, 157 Mulford Road.
Senator Cole Gentile, AB, Hagan Dry, has owned the West Cater Company, which is at 335, I believe, Salmon Brook Street. I went into the Whisk space, oh gosh, I wrote it two years ago, to taking over just the restaurant portion of that building, it's the yellow building on Salmon Brook Street. When I took over that space, Rob Rome is the owner of the building, he's my landlord, he offered me the space that's connected, which is now, or is soon to not be, the candy store, what everybody sees as a candy store. So it's the yellow building, there's the candy store in the front, my kitchen is to one side, and then a basement portion, and then there's a caretaker's apartment or an apartment in the back, and then there's the little yellow building, which is, propane has been of...
It's been a lot of different stuff.
Yeah.
The gun store, whatever, whatever. Rob Rome approached us because the candy store is pulling out of business and she is vacating the premises. He then offered that, the whole property, well, whatever, there's a million things that we've gone back and forth about. The reason the Whisk never expanded into the candy store portion is it's a host of issues if we wanted to expand in a restaurant capacity, or anything of that sort of capacity, because I believe we're going to run into lots of issues as far as parking is concerned with the space.
Because it's currently approved as a restaurant, but only for 16 tables, I believe, or something, something similar. So what's, what would be a better use as an accessory to the catering, would be as like, it says event space or banquet, but I think that's kind of gives the wrong impression, something gathering space, meeting space, something like, would, would the restaurants have, like, Little Pizza has their side room, or the barn has their upstairs room? So if it was a regular restaurant, it'd be like accessory use, except by being catering, it doesn't need those requirements necessarily, so it's kind of that gray area where it would be the same small, small gathering uses, but it's not currently allowed inside the center of the home phone by itself.
And then there is no regulation, because, and you've had, you've looked into this, because there is no other town regulations. Though, I'm a little confused, because Karen's Catering was operating out of Manitowoc Lake camp, as a meeting place, and there are still some nonprofit events and stuff that go on, there are a few guys, like the comedy show by Unicorns, or things like that, and that's only eight acres, and that's only, that's not very far from where I am on Salmon Brook, not in the downtown area, but there is no other, there is no, I guess there's no other provision. The, the, the regulation that we cite in our letter that you have, Abby, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you said that's for farm and residential and 50 acres or more, or something like that?
Yeah, so the, the section that's being referenced there, that falls under, I think it's the special commercial assembly use, so it's like, I, I know.
Like, yeah.
Yeah.
So what we're hoping to get today is some feedback on, I guess, the first step we would have to amend the zone to allow such a venue by special permit, and then just get the overall feel for if that would be acceptable, and then the feel of, you know, applying that to that building. We think it's a good fit, because the catering company's already there, there's a door between the two rooms, it's divided A B, there's no neighbors, it's already can use as a restaurant, but then 4H has been like a place to do like cooking classes and things, which would go great, having a catering kitchen and everything right there.
Thanks, Frank. So you have a nice, I've been in, I haven't been inside in a while, but I know it's a big, it was kind of open inside.
It's one giant open room that has a bathroom and a small kitchen there, but also has a doorway into the commercial kitchen.
And I'm an account, I was an accountant before I took over the, the catering company, and we had run the numbers on this building like a zillion different ways, and because of the parking, you could not feasibly do, I don't believe you could do a restaurant there, and I think this kind of use, I think we could actually make some money off of being able to use that space.
Yeah, you bring up a good, good point, and I've been on the commission a while, we've talked about, parking is a concern at that location, I don't want to, you're speaking on a text amendment or the zone on one, but this, there is a parking, because the, the lot's currently not in performance, I believe, for its markings and stuff.
Yeah, in terms of markings.
Yeah, so you do have a space, I forget how many spaces.
I believe 27 as well.
27.
Is that, is that, let's see, if you...
Off the top of my head.
We'd have to check.
I believe that it was 27, and we looked at what you guys have, so if it's...
Yeah, because the parking lot would have to be fixed up, and...
Right.
We ran into a custom case, so we can't go to the landlord and he mustn't, we're not going to go forward with the lease, because it's not our parking lot, nor are we going to put a lot of money into it if we're then going to get turned down by you guys to do the event space, we're just going to say, okay, we'll find something else to rent this space.
I would say, process wise, is, you want to propose a, it's called a text amendment, right, to our regulations, and you would propose an application, and ideally some, some wording for that text amendment, and we have an application for that that goes through, through town hall, and that's presented to us, you would say what you want the regulation to read, right? And, and then we would, you come into this public hearing for it, but you would present in a formal setting what you want to do and why you want that regulation, and then remember, the regulation doesn't apply just to the property, again, applies to the whole zone.
Correct.
And that's why, I mean, we took a look at other towns around us, nobody has wording, like, every event space is, take more weddings for a banquet space, so it couldn't, so much coffee paste. I know Simsbury has a similar venue, and they crammed it in by, they have a little bit of retail in the front, so now they call it retail, an accessory use, but nobody has an actual verbiage we can even come up with, that would kind of satisfy what we want to do without making it seem like, all right, we're going to have 300 people having a wedding there.
What about a retail, you know, wine, etc., Simsbury now is doing, shikri re classes and stuff in their spaces, what if we opened a specialty store, specialty food store, because it's already zoned, to be able to have such a thing down at a candy store, and then just had, do this as an ancillary thing?
Then it can't be ancillary to a catering, though. I don't know what the other, is it there, to be honest, that may be a non...
Nothing.
No, there, I believe there is a special permit for that one.
For Manitowoc?
Yes.
Well, but you said there was no regulation for event spaces, that's an event space.
Because I believe it's falling under a nonprofit use, I, I have to check the file, I don't want to, I don't want to get it wrong.
Grandfather, too, from...
Or maybe that's, what, was it an old camp?
There's all camps and clubs in town.
No, no, she, it was...
I don't know.
You, you could, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, because, again, we're just discussing, but I'm saying, you could Google it, and it has come up that it used to be a rentable facility, your Karen's Catering, and she was running out of there, and not just for nonprofit use.
Abby had a question.
Yeah.
We've talked about various avenues here, all, informally, but restaurant. The broadest definition, I, I read something about staff's review, this type of facility's not covered by the special permit uses, but why isn't this a restaurant?
Yeah.
We have restaurants that are open for breakfast, we have them that are... We have restaurants that are open for breakfast. We have them that are open for block. We have them for any combination of that, lunch and dinner. Why isn't a place that serves food just fall generally into the category of a restaurant and why can't they be governed by the restaurant code?
If that's what the commission is comfortable doing, that's fine.
If you serve food, to me, it's a restaurant.
It's a, I mean, the catering, it could be ancillary to a catering.
So then they would fall under the current special permit and the limitations for that restaurant? In, in thinking about.
Just thinking out loud.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And it says here that restaurants limited seating or restaurants subject to 8.16. I don't have 8.16 in front. It feels like it could be a restaurant.
It was a, it was a pizza place.
It was a restaurant at one point.
Right. It used to be a sporting goods store.
The Cater's Kitchen, my Cater's Kitchen is the, like, under Farmington Valley Health, because that's what I apply with. But we're the, we have a rest, we have the same license as a restaurant in townhouse, downtown house. We're on that same level.
You got to come up there.
If parking doesn't pose a problem, I mean, in these circumstances.
Absolutely. Well, you're limited by the number. No matter what.
What you're proposing, is parking, parking going to limit your event space?
Yes, it's going to.
Is there a, I didn't check, is there a rule for how many parking spaces per?
For a restaurant, you need eight spaces per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area.
Oh, there's way more than that. There's 20, there's 27 spots for 14 acres square. Now if you take out. Right.
I have to look at it because that sounds like a lot of spots.
In the plan, they crammed them in every little angle.
What's, what was approved? Our recent plan that was a proposal, an informal discussion, but we have to go, you'd have to check with Abby and the landlord, the last permit, there's actually approved plan.
We did take a look at that.
Yeah, that's 27. I'm not saying it right or wrong. I just don't remember. It just sounds like a lot for me in there. So I guess, the way I'd look at this, is if the commission was agreeable, if we think this could possibly be considered a restaurant, I'd be open minded to listen to Charles for a restaurant. Then it would be up to you to work with Abby. It's about how big it could be, how much space, right, versus the.
I think that's much simpler, Abby.
You're going to make food for people and sell it, correct? And include itself.
It is.
That's a restaurant.
We have, we have a pickup window. We do pre.
It used to be, they used to sell food there and.
It was a refreshment, prior to you taking over, it was just a refreshment stand out of that window.
All right, so we will talk to Abby about going as a restaurant, what we can do in that space as a restaurant.
Does that, is that okay with that?
So everything, so if no food being brought in, everything would be through your kitchen?
You can make a requirement. You can just, it's a requirement. That's, that's very typical in lots of places. So you open that door and then, you know.
Yep.
And you just say that, you know, you cannot bring any out or food in.
Yeah, then you're serving food as a restaurant.
Yeah, I think if you take away the outside option to bring it in, then that's closer to a restaurant because it's producing and serving on site as opposed to allowing outside caterers to come in, which.
Totally agree. One of the first things you said though was that you didn't think you could make it as a, the property.
Because for a restaurant.
You would have to have its own separate kitchen inside the room by the health because of the different steps going in there, which we need a block of square footage inside the building, which is, I believe, why the Monet Pizza Islands in there, they were only given 16 seats as a restaurant?
No, I don't think, well, that, I think that hurdle like can overcome. I've already talked to the Farmington Valley Health about it, the inspector there, but, because there is nothing wrong. The kitchen is fully certified. The problem is, is there are three steps that go from the kitchen into that other space. So the way Farmington Valley Health is, it has to be same room, same space. So right now, we have a small space that we have crammed everything that we need to get certified with the Department of Health to be able to. The problem is if we were to run a higher volume restaurant, that makes no sense because there's no room basically to do dishes with three basins and all these other things. We want to kind of go into the little space that's behind that door, which is now a kitchen. It is a kitchen on the other side, a fully certified kitchen on the other side, and use that space. So that's just a hurdle I would have to get through with Farmington Valley Health. He said it's very doable, that part of it, that's very easy. When I say that I don't think a restaurant could survive there, I think based on the parking, you couldn't turn over enough tables to make enough money from that perspective.
My memory of your parking lot from last Thanksgiving when.
It's terrible.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, I know, but you don't have the stripes, right?
Yeah.
Cars in if you have conforming stripes, because people, when there's, when it's kind of an open space like that, you know, some of the cars, they don't know where to go.
So it's actually in the site plan, they were supposed to have, but whether.
Right, so I think that would certainly be a requirement that we would, but is that they would actually have to get that when, you know, we issued approval that they would do that.
Correct, and that gives us a little more, because we can, then go back to the landlord again. We don't own the building. And say, we need to do this to the parking lot where to move forward, take over the space, you know, do those sorts of things. So that's where we were. It took me six months to get the, to turn the parking lot lineup.
Yeah. I think, just as a summary, and commission, I think we're interested in your idea. It sounds something that we'd be interested to support, you know, and it makes, that makes sense to me. Other restaurants, and if, if you could work it out, staff on the restaurant angle, I think the commission would entertain that from here. If not, we would have to go to that text amendment that I mentioned to you, right?
No, it sounds like a much easier.
You know, that facility, if you're interested, make a go of it.
Oh, we do. Well, now the, they're doing eviction proceedings on the candy store, so it's.
Well, it said, continue working and then I assume we'll see you again sometime.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, item 11, any reports from staff?
Just a couple of quick notes. Thank you for everyone who has responded. There is going to be the joint board meeting on March 18th to review the proposed solar trial. So I will be sending an agenda out when it gets closer to that meeting date. We also did receive notification and a letter or notice was pushed out through the town communication system that the appeal period will start for the FEMA flood maps tomorrow. So it's a 90 day appeal period. We have information posted on the website. If anyone has questions, they can give me a call.
Did they expand the FEMA map?
Yes.
Great.
Let me go look at it. I'm going to have to. Any commission reports?
I will be out of town on March 12th, but I would want to make sure that if we move forward on an application that's going to be heard, that I could stay involved in it. So there's no, I could just keep myself up on Zoom.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Again, we're not going to do any hearings the night. And I, speaking of being, I'm the 26th. I've asked vice chair Myers if he graciously run the meeting and since his vice chair, he had no choice. I believe Commissioner Cheney may be out as well, so I'll leave.
I am going to be in Phoenix on March 12th.
So just so I, are, did you say you were able to join via Zoom, Brennan?
No, no, I'll be flying on that day.
You'll be flying, okay. And you won't be able to join via Zoom either?
I don't think so. Depending, depending on when I land in Phoenix, I could, you know, probably, possibly fall in from Zoom.
So I'll plan on having alternates available and then it would just be a matter of, you know, it will be reported. It's just familiarizing yourself and stating on the record.
Yeah, plus my first grandchild is due March 19th, so that. Yeah, that may throw all plans into black.
That's fantastic. Anything else?
If not, take the motion to adjourn. Don't move.
All in favor? We are adjourned.